Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders 2.02.1 and those which followed, suspending certain provisions of the open meetings law. The meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, which is, by the way, a new, sharp-looking website. Go there and take a look at it if you haven't already. And it's also the meeting being broadcast on the Town of Penfield's government access channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you'd like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be a specific public participation opportunity for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentations with its questions and concerns. How can you participate? Well, you can phone in at 340-8771, or you can send in comments via electronic submission also on the website, www.penfield.org. Each meeting, we like to tell folks that we think the town does a really good job of letting people in the town know that they can participate and that we welcome their comments. The town does this by sending postcards to people. If you live within a certain distance of the subject property, the town posts the agenda on its website here at the town hall. The town also requires applicants to post the signs on the property, look very much like a for-sale sign. We've all seen them. And again, we do that so you'll know that you can come in and talk with us if you like. We're going to have a go into our work session and take care of some administrative business and any tabled matters, and then, right after that, we're going to launch into our public hearings tonight. And typically, what I'll tell you is we ask the applicant to come -- well, usually, pre-COVID, we ask the applicant to come up to the podium, but tonight, we're going to ask the applicant to give us name and address. And then usually, we have the applicant give a presentation about what's being requested of the board. We all have very thorough and very high-quality written applications, which contains a lot of the information, maps, drawings, that sort of thing, as well as a description of what's being requested. But usually, the applicant does give a brief presentation. Tonight, because we have such a large agenda, I've asked the board members if they would leave the -- lead the applicant through the process, just to sort of move things along. I do want everyone to know that we're not going to short-change anybody. If somebody feels like he or she wants to say something germane to the application, they're going to be given a full opportunity to do that. So with all that being said, did I miss anything before we do the pledge? All right. Would folks rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we'll go to the agenda at the work session, and may -- we all have had the minutes, looked them over. May I have a motion to approve those, or is there any additions, deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
So Andres and Matt, the motion to approve the minutes in a second. Any further discussion? Another good job as usual, Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
The second matter we have is a tabled application on the old Quarry Lane, known as the RIT application. We have a two-part application, if I'm not mistaken, for two variants. One is for a fence higher than permitted around their garden, so the deer don't eat everything. And the other is to allow a number of no trespassing signs larger than are allowed by code. We tabled this because we wanted to see if there was going to be any relevant action that took place at the planning board last week. And so Andy, can you just kind of give us a brief update on what happened there, and then we can move along with this, I think, tonight?
Sure. The, as you said, the planning board tabled the matter. The applicant did withdraw the original proposal for an expansion of the conditional use, and they're just seeking approval for some site modifications or site improvements. And staff has made a determination that the proposed garden and the signs do fall under the original conditional use permit that was approved by the zoning board originally.
So what do you mean by that? That we have jurisdiction to entertain those requests, or?
What's that?
I'm sorry, I should have let you finish. You said that staff has determined that the garden and the signs fall under the?
Right. The original conditional use permit was for the approval to use the property by RIT for educational purposes, that sort of thing. So what they're now proposing is to use the existing building for meetings and that sort of thing, which we determined does fall under the?
It's consistent with the approval.
Right.
Okay, got it.
The planning board also stated that they respect RIT's position, that this is private property, and appears that they saw the need for the no trespassing signs. They didn't specifically approve, say they were opposed or for the signs, but they do understand the need for RIT to be able to adequately identify the property with no trespassing signs.
Okay. And I don't think that we conducted seeker on this last time, if I'm not mistaken.
No, we didn't.
But I think we had that classified as a unlisted action, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Or as type 2?
We do have the representatives from RIT here as well.
Yeah, okay. So representatives from RIT, you've already heard me say that we have a large agenda tonight, but you've also heard me say no one is going to be short-changed. So do you have anything to quickly add to what Andy said? I do think we're ready to move forward on this application tonight, so.
No, I think Andy, Mr. Chairman, said it well. We did have a, what I believe to be a positive meeting with the planning board last Thursday and with the public as well. I don't believe we have anything. I'll let Marilyn and Dave speak if they want to, but I don't believe we have anything to add above and beyond what we said last month.
I haven't answered any questions, but no further comments from me.
All right. I don't want to short-change any board members either, if you have any questions to ask. Okay, so let's then, thank you. Let's then turn to the seeker. I will make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and also issue a negative declaration under seeker.
I'll second.
Okay, I've made that motion, and Andres is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, as far as the merits of the application, I would make a motion to approve the fence. Seems pretty clear to me that that is an area where you're going to, if you're going to have a big garden like this, which I'm sure will be wonderful, you're going to want the fence around it. And I'd also note that the actual, I think, the most, if not all, of the two feet in excess of code is wire. It's not going to be solid material, for the most part, in any event. And even if it were solid, I'd still be okay with it. I'm sure they'll want to make it look nice from the renderings, and I don't think there's any adverse effect on any neighboring properties or anything along those lines. So on the fence, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right, let's take them one at a time, then. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the fence variance request in a second. Any further discussion?
I would just note that the Penfield Community Garden also has an eight-foot fence around it, too, so there's definitely precedence on for that.
Great. Any further discussion?
No, I just think with the size of the land, I think, too, it's a far enough proximity from neighbors and things like that, where it's not an ominous fence, you know, right next to someone else's home, that might be a distraction or disturbance.
Yep, very relevant point. Okay, let's call the question there. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstentions. Okay. Now, as far as the signs go?
abstaining, Dan. I abstained, though I wasn't here for the application.
Oh, okay, all right. So let's note that, that Mike abstained. I guess my ears are just used to hearing him talk. In any event, okay. So on the signs, I have to tell you, I'd like to talk about this a little bit with the board members, because I am struggling with, I guess, the size of them and the number of them. And I certainly heard the applicant last time talk about the need for it, and Andy's let us know that the planning board also has recognized the need for privacy down there. But it's a, they're pretty large compared to what the code allows. One square foot, Andy, am I correct on that?
Yes.
And each of these is over nine square feet. So I'm just, I am wondering whether it's a little bit, or a lot of bit, of overkill in terms of the size.
I'm wanting to say, I think it's overkill. I mean, I spend a lot of time on and around the Quay Creek, not in that area, but if I was to walk by every single parcel and everyone had a large sign like this in front of their property as you walk along the creek, I just wonder what kind of precedent that might send, in a sense that we're saying it's good for here, that means where is it not good? You know, where would it, you know, apply elsewhere? And I could see that, you know, if you follow the creek along, there's a lot of parcels of land that follow down there. I could see everyone wanting to do something like that.
So is it the, both the number of signs and the size, or is it?
I think it's more, well, the number of signs, they're not restricted from having, from posting property. I think this is really, you know, really more the size, which is really what we're looking at.
Okay, I just didn't know whether you would, if they had fewer signs, you'd be okay with them.
I think it's both sides. I think there's already a means to post property.
Okay. Matt, anything, or?
You know, I'm struggling, because they are large, but it's also private property. It's not right on the property line. It's set in from the property, so that to post for someone who has, it's not necessarily to, it is to keep them off of their property, but it's not to prevent them from entering the property. It's once they've entered to post it.
To get them to turn around.
To get them to turn around. So, you know, I'm balancing their right on their property, but also the very large sign.
Yeah. Okay. Well, okay, you're still abstaining. Marie, I don't want to, I want to give you an opportunity if you have any thoughts on it or not.
Well, I just see an enormous amount of white space with these signs, and I just, there could be an economy of use and bring it down. You know, I get that you need signs. I get that you want to protect the property, but I think a lot of this can just be said with less space, and it could be smaller.
Well, so I'm going to go off-script a little bit here and ask the applicant, you know, one of the, one of the things that we are supposed to do as a board when we have a variance request is to consider granting the smallest variance we can in keeping with the code and the applicant's purpose. And honestly, to us, that means that we can work with the applicant like we're trying to do here with you, so. And if you want to consider this further, you know, we're okay with that, and come back next month. But what size, what's the smallest size that you honestly could live with here and feel that these are effective? And if the answer is 9.33 square feet each, so be it. I don't want you leaving here and thinking that you agreed to something that is just not going to work. That doesn't make any sense.
I appreciate the opportunity to address this. So a couple of points. In terms of size, you know, so as the gentleman said, the point is to alert someone, something that you can't really ignore. So does it have to be quite that large? No, we could scale it back. I think, you know, two and a half feet square would be sort of a minimum, you know, call it five square feet, maybe, something like that. I want to emphasize a couple of points. So we're asking to put up four signs in strategic locations that are not right on the property line. They won't be visible from any other adjoining properties. In regards to the white space, that's really just a formatting issue for how the image was submitted. All that white space on the top and the bottom is not going to be on the actual sign. You're right. If that was the final version, that would be too much white space, too much unutilized area. But that was just a result of how it was transferred digitally. The real sign won't have that white space on the top and on the bottom.
You know what? Thank you for the reminder. Now I remember that. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. So, yeah, we're asking to put up four signs, a one-by-one posted sign. People just get fatigue, you know, visual fatigue of seeing those. They're used to ignoring them all the time. So we're trying to have something a little bit bigger, so that if someone does wander onto our property, they'll see something and it has a stronger visual impact. So I'd like to see it, you know, two feet by two feet is a little bit, you know, five square feet would be okay. We could tone it down from the nine square feet, if that's what the board is seeking.
Well, I heard you give a couple of numbers, two by two, and I didn't go to RIT, but two by two is four, which is less than five. So is it five? Is that what you think, five square feet?
Yeah.
You think that'll work?
Yeah, I think that would suffice.
Okay. All right, well.
It might be a rectangle and not a square, perfect two by, or two and a half by two and a half.
Maybe a trapezoid, or a parallelogram.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to add that, in response to, you know, setting a precedence for every neighbor having a sign this big, this is a 142-acre parcel.
Sure.
They're only going to put up four signs. So the, as opposed to putting them on, like Dave said, causing a visual fatigue and just becoming numb to them, it is RIT's intention to just strategically place these signs. They won't be carpeted along the accessways, just strategic locations to let people know they've gone too far.
Okay. So, all right. May I ask the three of you, just to give your names, because I asked you to speak, we have to have your names again. I apologize for that.
Sure. Dave, go ahead.
I'm David Bro. I'm Director of RIT's State Reserve.
I'm Marilyn Schlier. I'm Manager of Real Estate at RIT.
And Dan Brock, Lead Civil Engineer, Project Manager for Labelle Associates.
Okay, thank you for that. So now, I'm, I will make a motion to approve the modified application for the signs at five square feet. Once again, just while it is a substantial variance, I do think that the size of this lot and the particular use of it does weigh in favor of granting the variance. I agree with Andres, we have to worry about precedent here, but as I said, the characteristics of this particular property, I think, are quite unique. So that would be my motion.
I'll second.
Further conversation? All right. All those in favor of the new variance request? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, or opposed.
Okay. Three to one, so that's a pass. All right, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your time.
I'm sure we'll see you again. You're welcome. Okay. We don't need a break, do we?
Not yet.
No. All right, well, then, that will conclude the work session, and we'll launch right into the public hearings. I will remind folks out there that if you have a comment on any of these applications at the appropriate time, you can make a phone call, 340-8771. In fact, you can do that anytime, and you'll just be put on hold until it's your time to speak. You can also submit comments electronically at www.penfield.org. And as I said earlier, because of the lengthy agenda, we're going to sort of move applicants through the applications. We have very thorough written applications that we've had for nearly a month. We've all reviewed them, and we're pretty confident we know everything, but we'll bring out the key, well, we know everything. We are confident in that regard, too, I'll tell you that, but about the applications, we're well-informed about the applications. And so we are ready to proceed with the first application, please.
Paul Dondorfer, 68 Woodside Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 68 Woodside Drive. The properties currently are formally owned by Paul Dondorfer and is owned R-1-15, SBL number 139.10-3-82. This is application number 21Z-0011.
Thank you for joining us. So it looks like tonight, your application, you are looking for a 12-by-16 shed. They'll be less than 18 feet tall, and it's going to be five foot, or you're asking for a five-foot variance from the east, which is the, that's going to be the side, or that's going to be your back property line, and then the south with the five-foot setback, which is going to be your side property line. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And the shed appearance, is the exterior going to be complementary or similar to your siding of your house?
It will be the same color as my house, yes.
Perfect, thank you. And are there sheds in your neighborhood currently that you can see from your property?
Yes, there is.
Like approximately, how many would you think there are?
I could see four from my backyard.
Okay, so sheds are common in your neighborhood, then?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. And for the, for the area of your yard, you're placing that shed, I think you said in your application, in the most level spot towards the back that would require the least amount of disturbance to the soil for backfilling and grading?
That is correct.
Okay. And there's, the other areas didn't work because, I guess, it looked like there was a flatter area up by the side of your house, but that would probably also still require a variance to be too close to your property line on the uphill side of your house.
Yes, and it would also create an issue getting in and out of the backyard with any type of, any type of vehicles or equipment that needs to get in the back.
Okay.
As well as taking down a multitude of trees.
Okay, thank you. And then, in your application letter, you also indicated that you spoke with neighbors, and none expressed any issues with your shed? Is that still correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And Andy, yes, I have a question for you. I think we had a shed application that was pretty similar to this, that had a five-foot by five-foot variance in the past, too, didn't we? Do you recall? And I was putting you on the spot there.
Yeah, we actually had a similar application that requested side and rear setback, and I think the board actually?
The board granted that one, too, I believe, okay.
Yes.
All right. And one more for you, Andy. Have we received any comments from the public for the town from this application?
I'm not aware of any, no.
Okay. That's all I have. Do you have anything else to add, sir?
No, sorry, don't.
And I'm looking on the call-in, and there are a couple people in the queue, but not for this application. Actually, it looks like one person is in queue twice. So maybe a landline and a cellphone? Who knows?
We'll find out.
We will find out.
Application number six, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And also see no electronic submissions, so I think, I think we're good to go. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right.
Perfect. Then I'll move right into it. For seeker, this is a type 2 action, not subject to further review.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion by Andres to declare it a type 2 action under seeker. I have seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, for the application, it was a thorough application that covered most of our concerns in terms of, we're looking at the various aspects. This is in harmony with the neighborhood. There's several sheds in the area. While this is, you know, a self-created problem, it is probably the best spots to place the shed in terms of the amount of disturbance for the environment and the neighborhood for bringing fill and things like that. So I think in terms of the layout of the yard, this probably is the best spot for it, and I will make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Yeah, okay, so Andres has moved to approve, Matt seconded. And I would add, too, there's a lot of buffering, natural buffering from a lot of trees in that area.
True.
So it's, it's not going to be a visual problem for anybody, in my opinion. Okay, any further comments? Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one?
We're going to go too fast for Christine tonight.
Martin Shute, 1050 Plank Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a barn with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F8 of the code at 1068 Plank Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Martin Shute and is owned RR-1, SBL number This is application number 21Z-0012.
Matt's going to walk you through this application.
Good evening, Mr. Shute. So just a couple of questions. So this barn is replacing a barn that was already not within the setback requirements, correct?
Correct. It's a 150-year-old barn that fell in, and we decided to, it was a hazard, and so we decided to excavate it out.
And this is going to put your property more in compliance than that previous barn, correct?
Correct.
And I'm assuming that it's, it's going to look nicer, and it's going to be more of a modern barn than the one that was dilapidated, correct?
It is, yes. It'll be in keeping with the barns across the street, the same colors, the same as Shute Cider Mill, red and white.
And you went right into my next question. There's other barns within the area. I believe if you go one way, you're going to run into a turkey farm, and if you go the other way, there's a farm, Bowman's Farm is up there, correct?
Yes.
And is there another place within the property that you could put this barn? I know there's a lot of crops.
Not without, we have fruit growing on both sides of the barn. This is the best spot. We'd hate to, it takes so long to get trees into production that we don't want to really get into the orchard land.
And then, you're looking for a, a, let's see, a 60-foot variance, correct? So you're looking for it to be 40 feet rather than 100 feet?
Forty feet from the property line, and the barn is basically the same square footage as the old barn that went down, just a little different shape.
Yeah, it's about 72 square feet bigger, correct?
It could be. I haven't done the math.
It looks like that you're proposing a 3,840-square-foot barn, and it's replacing a 3,768-square-foot barn.
Yes.
So it's about 72 square feet.
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Plus, the land is owned by us on both sides of it, and I have submitted a couple of papers from the neighbors who will visually be able to see it, and they both approved that it's not a problem for them.
I saw that, a Judy Tuttle and a Paul Shute, correct?
Yes, correct.
Any relation there? All right, you don't have to answer that.
Judy Tuttle is not related, right?
No, no, she isn't, but she's in my father's old house.
All right, I'll note, I don't see any, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you didn't. I said it was okay.
Okay, I, there's no call-in comments, nothing electronic as well, so let's proceed.
For seeker, I would move that this is a type 2 action, not requiring any further review.
Second.
Okay. That's Matt with the type 2 motion, and Marie with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, on the merits?
For the merits, I was For the merits, I would move to approve this variance. I frankly don't know that there's a change, let alone a undesirable change. There was a barn there in the past, and frankly, if anything, it's probably a desirable change because it's replacing a, I've seen that barn, and I saw it before I came down, and it was definitely time, time to go. It's certainly not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's not going to be a detriment to nearby properties. We know there's two adjacent landowners that are fine with it. It's not feasible to move at other places within the property because of the crops. It's, it is a substantial variance, but it's not in the same time because it's, there was a barn there before that was a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And I haven't seen or heard anything that would impact the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And, you know, I guess it's self-created, but again, I think that that's a minimal issue for this. And then there are other barns within, within the close proximity to this, so I would move to approve.
Second. The only thing I would add is not long ago, we had an application for a pole barn, maybe, or it's a structure, I don't know, half a mile, quarter of a mile down the road. But that was a new structure as opposed to one that's replacing something, and, and not that it's always determinative, but there was opposition to that one as opposed to support, which we have here.
And this one is actually a barn for a farm?
For a farm, yeah, okay.
Surrounded by farmland.
Correct, by crops, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, and did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you for your, for your considerations.
You're welcome. Number three.
Francis Chapa, 2 Colonial Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger shed than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 2 Colonial Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Mary E. Chapa and is owned RR-1-15, SPL number 124.14-1-30. Application number 21Z-0013. And if I mispronounced your last name, I apologize.
That's okay, thank you.
All right, Andres will lead you through this application, but before he starts, I'll just remind folks that if they have any comments, they can call 340-8771 or submit electronic comments at the website, penfield.org. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for joining us. So you're looking for a shed, and it's asking to be larger than allowed by code. It looks like 88 square feet larger than what's allowed for that. In your application, you wrote the shed will be blue with white trim. Is this still accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And that will, and that is to match the color of your home?
Very similar, yes.
Very similar?
Yes.
Okay. In your neighborhood, do other homes have sheds that you've seen from the road or from your neighbors' homes? Okay.
Yes.
So that's something that would be in character with the neighborhood, is to have sheds in the area? When looking at your area, do most homes, like within the, you know, eyesight, have two-car garages?
It's mixed.
It's mixed?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed you currently have, yep, go ahead, sorry.
I think there might be a few more on our street with two-car garages than, than not, but I never counted, so I don't know.
Sure. And where I was going with it, is it looked like when I was looking around there, I would say more than half have, you know, larger garage space than what you currently have in terms of, you know, the size of the garage for storage and things like that. Because it looked like you had a single-car garage where most of your neighbors to either side of you have two, two-car garages in terms of space-wise. And that was going to lead me into the question of, is that primarily the reason for the request for the larger shed? Is for storage in terms that you don't have storage within your current garage?
Yes.
Okay. And then looking at the size of the shed, because you are asking for a large one, are you trying to, in a sense, line up the size of the shed with the size of your garage? Because it looks like the depths are almost the same, if not identical?
Yes, they are the same. That's exactly what I was shooting for.
Sure, sure. So, you know, in a sense, this is kind of going to be a second garage for you, in a sense, right next to your existing garage, to try to be, you know, to blend in a little bit better that way?
Correct, with a little walk space in between, but storage only. There will be no vehicles.
Okay. And then outside of your garage, it looked like you were storing some things outside of that garage. Will those be going into the shed if it was, if this was approved?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, all of that.
Perfect. Sounds like somebody really wants that all inside of a, of a storage space. Perfect.
Yeah, you know, I've tried to reduce what's stored outside, and it just, I'm down, it just doesn't happen. There's still stuff on the side of the house. You know, it's an on-store for everybody.
Sure. Especially with a one-car garage, it makes it a little tough to store everything.
Right, right.
Excellent. I don't have any further questions than that.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Applicants have anything further to add? You've done a great job. Okay, I'm going to take silence as a no, so let's, I see no, no calls, and I see no electronic comments, so let's proceed.
Move right through, yep. So this is a type-two action, not subject to further review under Seeker?
I will second that. So we, Andres with the motion on Seeker and my second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Okay, the merits?
Yep. And the merits, as I said before, and as the applicant wrote in their application, the shed will be very similar to the appearance of the garage in terms of color. It's lining up pretty close to the garage, so it will probably from the street have an appearance as a second garage bay that many neighbors do, do have where they have only one. And the sizing of that does kind of go in harmony with the size of the existing garage and structure. And so with that, I will move to approve the 88-square-foot larger shed.
I will second that. All right, so we have a motion to approve the variance request based upon the factors that Andres outlined. I have seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, good luck, folks, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Number four.
Kurt Finkbiner, Faith Lutheran Church, 2576 Browncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for a modification of a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.1-E1A of the code, and an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an events tent with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F10 of the code at 2576 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Faith Lutheran Church and is owned RR-1-20, SPL number 123.08-1-2. Application number 21Z-0014.
All right. Gentlemen, Marie will walk you through this application, but before she starts, I'll just remind people, if they have comments, they may call 340-8771 or submit them electronically at penfield.org. And may I ask you to give your names for the record as well before Marie starts?
Kurt Finkbiner, Building and Grounds Manager.
Pastor Peter Johnson, Associate Pastor at Faith Lutheran Church.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for coming this evening. So we have your application, and you're asking for an 800-square-foot tent. Is it my understanding that this is a normal pole tent, white in structure with three sides?
That's correct. We're getting enough side material to go all the way around it, but the intent is, depending on the weather situation, is how many sides are actually up. But yes, it is a two-inch aluminum pole-framed tent, white with sides with windows.
Okay, and then there would be propane heaters, it looks like?
Yes. We'll be getting a forced air propane heater with ductwork and a diffuser into the tent that will be 10 feet off the tent.
Okay. So I drove over there, and I just want to make sure that I understand exactly where the tent is going to be located. My understanding is that this is very close to the building itself, to the church itself?
It will be 20 feet off the church.
Okay, kind of near where the nursery school is?
20 feet, yeah, 20 feet north of the church in the grass area.
Okay, and so when I place it there, I don't see any neighbors really near there. There is a house, but it's set way, way back.
There's a vacant house, probably about 100 feet from our property line.
Okay.
And north of that area. And then there's Browncroft Community Church was about 400 feet from our property.
Right. But there's nobody right next to where that tent is going to be?
No.
Okay. And how many people do you think could fit in that tent?
It depends on our requirements for COVID.
Right.
The way I've got it laid out, if we have to have spacing in there, probably 48 to 50.
Okay, so that's a bit of a moving target. And then you mentioned that you're going to be using this for possible worship services, vacation Bible school. Can you talk about what kind of hours you're expecting events to be done? Would they be over with at what time approximately?
Sure. Our Faith Childcare and Nursery School will also be using it during the working day hours, and also in the evenings, whenever we have an evening event, typically on the weekends, and they'll all be done by 9:00 P.M.
Okay, any? Yes.
I can't hear.
It's very difficult.
Is it possible to speak up or turn up your volume? Or Dave?
Or Dave can?
I had to really struggle. I mean, I did hear it, but I understand it's hard.
Sure. Do you want me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Sure. Our Faith Childcare and Nursery School will be using the tent.
Better, thank you.
Yeah. They'll be using it throughout the week, during the weekday, and usually during the working hours. And then on the weekends, our events will always be done by 9:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you. And I had a question actually for Andy, which is when we have given permission to use a tent, I've always thought we approved it one year at a time, but you're asking for just a, like, to use it permanently year after year between May and October? I know, I'm asking both of you now.
Yeah, I think the board in the past has kind of wanted to see how the, how the events went and make sure there weren't any issues or problems, so they were more reluctant to approve it for more than a year or?
Okay.
And Marie, if I may, I don't recall a time when we've utilized that approach where we've said no when people have come back. We may have changed things a little bit based upon stuff we heard, but even those occasions are, are rare. So don't take offense if you hear us say we're going to let you try it for a year.
Well, let me, let me bring up one thing. We, we would like to purchase the tent versus renting the tent.
Right.
And if you say one year at a time, I'd have to go back and say, I don't know whether I want to buy it with the fact that I might not get it next year, and therefore I probably should have rented it, so that's my only concern.
All right, well, that's a fair concern.
What's the difference in cost? Like, how much is it to rent versus own?
It, I had it figured out for the months that we had, and it was about $6,600 to rent it, and our purchase is about 7, 7, 7,500 or thereabout. So we would need to, I'd have to look at that, do I want to rent it or do I want to buy it? Obviously, if I had it for two years, there's no question I would buy it.
No rent with an option to purchase, huh?
Wow. Yeah, I wouldn't be losing too much sleep over that. But okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would underscore what Dan just said, which is, you know, we've really not had a problem, but we always want to be consistent with how we've approached other permits of this nature as well. You know?
Okay.
Okay. And then do you foresee any issues with parking or anything like that?
No, not really. I mean, we've got plenty of parking space, certainly to handle anything that would be associated with the tent activity.
Okay. Yeah, it's a pretty big parking lot. Okay, I don't have any additional questions.
Go ahead, Mike.
What kind of, would there be any kind of music used in your services or, you know, singing? Just wondering about noise factor, volume?
Yeah, sure. So for outdoor worship services on Sunday evenings, we will have up to two musicians, so a guitar and a vocalist. So we're not talking about a rock band or Aerosmith here.
Okay.
Would those be acoustic or would they be amplified?
It'll be, it'll be amplified, yeah.
But we're not talking about huge bass speakers, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I see no call-in comments or, and I see no electronic comment, so let's proceed with the seeker.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action.
I'll second.
Okay. We have the seeker motion by Marie, second by Andres, type-two action, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, the merits?
Okay. And so on the merits of this application, I would like to approve a permit for one year. This is in keeping with our practice with other businesses that have come forward applying for tent. I am very sensitive to the fact that everyone needs to be thinking differently about how they're gathering during the pandemic and providing opportunities to gather in a safe way. I applaud your efforts to do that. I don't think there will be any detrimental impact to the environment, and I'm not concerned because there are, there's really a vacant lot right next to where the tent is going to be. You're very well buffered. There is nobody on the other side that I can remember within any distance either, so I don't think there will be any issues with additional traffic or anything that would impact the neighborhood. But I would ask that you do maintain, you know, keep track of the litter. If you create any trash, it's got to be, you know, kept tidy. And then also you need to abide by any noise ordinances, you know? And nine o'clock should, should keep you in good space with that. I understand that this is actually not entirely self-created due to the pandemic, so that's a rare change. So I don't see any reason, you know, I don't see any cause for concern.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve. Did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Andres will second that. Any further discussion? And it's for a period of one year?
Just a period of one year.
Okay.
I've got one question about that.
Sure.
Is there a way that that could be approved, conditioned upon a review at one year, so that it still stands? And then if we, if there's no issues, it continues on, in a sense? Is that, or is that not something that we would, you know? I'd hate to make more busy work where.
So you do it for two years unless we have?
Something like that, where, you know, in a sense, if the town receives no complaints, then we shouldn't really have an issue.
Right, so how about one complaint?
I think that.
I'm not trying to be a wise guy there.
But I think if there's a complaint, then they would be back next year.
Of, at all, if the town receives.
Correct, correct. If there's a complaint that comes to the town about what's occurring, because we're approving something that's occurring there, then we would want to hear what that was in a year.
And they would have to address it.
Yep.
Pete chiming in there, look at Pete.
That's what I was hoping for.
Go ahead, Mike.
I often, I also think we have approved one or two times in the years they've been on here, a three-year with similar type review.
We have, we have.
An automatic renewal.
The horse stables, we've done that. You know, we have, the next one is withdrawn, right? But it's, or is it not?
What's that?
The vendor, the flower vendor, no?
No, that's not.
Okay, so the next application wants to sell potted flowers in a parking lot, you know, for once a year as well. But that's the sort of thing that we've had fireworks come in now a couple of years. And we monitor that, so to speak, to see if there's any problems, because we expect those applications to come in. And we haven't had any issues with those as well. So if you guys are suggesting going longer and with the caveat that if we do receive a complaint, you'd have to come back in and address the complaint and the board would reserve the right to revoke the.
Remainer.
The remainder time period. If there aren't any complaints, you don't have to come back. If there are complaints and you come in and you address them, you're okay. If you don't address them, we reserve the right to revoke. That seems pretty fair to me, but our board attorney there is, well, now he went away.
Nope, it's done.
Now he's back. So go ahead and chime in, Pete.
Bigger than ever.
No, I, I think as long as you spell out the condition pretty well, what you did after I first popped up, so. Because initially, when Andres was asking the question, I was going to suggest, I mean, I'm a little, I think I, the way it was originally phrased, I think I would be hesitant to put you in a position where you have to revoke a permit. It's better to kind of, you know, look at it again for a renewal. But the way you've described it, I think is a, is a, is an alternative way that would work.
So Dan, can you just repeat that then to make sure we're all hearing the same thing?
Well, I will do my best. Can we hit rewind on the tape? So I think we're talking about three years. And if the town receives no complaints, then we don't need to see the applicant again?
That's a one-year mark, I guess, is what.
Well, yeah, or three years. We don't need to see you during the three-year period. If you want to continue after three years, then you'd have to come back. That's, that's one. Two is if we, if the town gets a complaint, the town will notify you. And after a period of one year, you'll have to come back to address that complaint. If everybody's okay waiting that, that period. Now, I'll also say if the complaint is something, I'm comfortable with deferring to Andy if it's a complaint, something that could be easily addressed.
Yes.
You know, simple. But if Andy is the zoning officer, determines that it's a significant enough complaint to come back to the board, then you'll be here before us. I don't want to waste anybody's time. If it's something minor, what I'd suggest you do, if you get a complaint, you speak with the person, you address it. Hey, okay, and I know you will do that. So I don't think that's an issue.
Pete's back in.
Then we'll make a determination after.
Yeah, we may not see it because Andy's addressed it. If Andy thinks it's substantial enough, then it comes before us. And yes, we had, at that point, they're given an opportunity to address it. If they have to our satisfaction, we say, "See you later." Still, the three years would apply. If they haven't addressed it, then we can revoke the permission.
So I just want to be clear, are you saying, I mean, like, let's say you grant them permission, they get a complaint next week. You want them back next week or you don't want them back?
Let it run, let it run a year.
The complaint's get held until the year anniversary and then the second year anniversary. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
So it could be reviewed on a yearly basis?
Do we make Andy make that determination?
Well, correct, right, I think that's what we're doing. Staff would say.
Whether it goes.
Whether it comes in immediately?
Yeah, whether to do it immediately or to let it go for.
Well, we don't want to be in a position where they're, we're making them come in once a month for two years.
Right, no, I think it should be reviewed annually.
Because that's what we would have done in normal situations anyway.
We do that with fireworks, we do that with, yeah. And Andy can make the determination whether it needs to come back here or not.
And then how far in advance? You're not going to wait for a year to pass because then you're into the second year. Where are you?
Well, they, they have to come, well, yeah, they, they would have to come in in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I think the onus is on them to.
Now, you know, if you get a complaint on the eve of the expiration of the first year, then they come in as soon as possible. Something along those lines.
Yeah, I guess my intent is make it easier for people to purchase their, you know, equipment.
Yeah, of course.
And, and hold on to it and not have to jump through as many hoops and, you know, come back automatically in a year when you don't necessarily have to. Because rarely do we have problems with these.
Agreed.
That's totally correct. Andy's raising his hand.
So if I understand correctly, if we have a significant violation, something that isn't resolved, then they're going to come back in at the end of the year?
First year, that's correct. Of, of course, you'll try to address the complaint if it's a noise, loud noise or something like that, or trash flying around. Marie raised a good point about that. You'll address that immediately. We may come back after a year anyway, and you say it's been addressed, and we say, "Well, make sure it doesn't happen again." Whatever, that, that'll be up, that'll be up to you, but there's.
And remember, the tent is only from May to October.
Right.
So you've got a lull period in there.
Yep. Okay, well, I think we're good. And even with all this great conversation, we've had no phone calls or no electronic submissions. So I think the public's on everybody's side here. So are we good to go or?
I think we have a motion and a second already.
We have a motion amended as discussed.
Correct.
I'll second that amendment.
And Andres has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, unanimous, good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why didn't I think the next one was, I thought you said something was.
Because he put a notation on that, that something had been withdrawn in that margin, but it was another, it was a 12th matter, my understanding.
Oh, you, oh, look, see him pointing that finger? Interesting, team players around.
I asked the same question.
All right, so next application, number five.
Kimberly Kreischer, Abundant Flowers Incorporated, 295 Lake Road, Ontario, New York, 14519. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under section 162-6-E1B and section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of potted flowers, vegetables, and herbs at 1601 Penfield Road. Property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield TK Owner LLC and its own general business. SBL number 138.08-1-2 point forward slash PLZA. Application number 21Z-0015.
Okay, before we start here, and I think Marie's going to lead you through this application as well, but I would remind members of the public that they can call with comments 3408771, submit them electronically at penfield.org. And may we have your name for the record, please?
Certainly, it's Kimberly Kreischer, 295 Lake Road in Ontario.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Kimberly, for coming in. I've reviewed your application and just to make sure, you did get permission from the developer of Panorama Plaza, the manager, to set up a tent, correct? The tent is 1,800 square feet, right?
Yes.
And it will be located there temporarily from April 26th, which isn't too far away, through June 16th, so through the planting period, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit about how many employees, what your hours are going to be, that kind of thing?
Sure, our tents generally have one to three employees in there, depending on the, the day and the busyness of the weekends. We are generally open from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 P.M., give or take an hour on either side. We do not have power in the tent, so we will not be operating at night. There will be no heaters in the tents. It's purely to sell live potted flowers, vegetables, and herbs.
How do you keep the tent secure at night or when you're closed?
Pretty much, we just clip the flaps closed. Plants are, you know, really not items that are high theft items. We are a franchise business and the franchisor has been in business for 30 years, mostly down in the Pennsylvania area, and they rarely have issues with, with them.
Okay, and do you foresee any problems with parking or traffic flow? You're actually closer to the road, you're actually closer to Penfield Road. So you're really not where people are parking up close to the storefronts.
That is correct. We're far, pretty far away from the store. We are out of the main lanes, driving lanes, both into the plaza and kind of across the front of the plaza. And that is the area that the, that the plaza owner has kind of identified as least risk for the tent, the tent type businesses. So yes, we're, we're right, pretty much where the yellow marker is, we're, we're right in that area, so.
And any music playing?
No music, no.
Okay, that was, those were all the questions I had.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
No. All right, I see no call-ins or electronic comments, so let's proceed with the seeker.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker requiring no further action.
I'll second.
All right, Marie's seeker motion, Andres second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and no opposed? The merits?
Yes, on the merits of the application, I would move to approve an itinerant vendor license for the sale of potted flowers, vegetables, and herbs from April 26th through June 16th. I think this would be a really nice addition to Panorama Plaza, actually. I think it would draw some people into that plaza, which is really nice. They don't see any detriment to the environment, physical or otherwise. I know you're going to take care of any garbage that's created, any, any products that way. And I, I think it's going to be in keeping with the plaza nicely.
I'll second.
All right, a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, and I do have one question. You know, we, we talked about the, the idea of having multiple years. I know this is year one, so I totally understand if year one, we see how it goes and I come back. But if this does work out well, I do have, I would like to come back multiple years to the same area and would be definitely interested in, you know, if we could do multi-year, be kind of the same approach that you talked about with the, the tent for the previous applicant.
I think you can speak with Andy about that afterwards. This is a specific license and I don't know if the code limits it. But, you know, that's what we're here for and none of us will take offense at the fact that you obviously don't want to come and see us every year.
Understand, thank you very much.
The license might be limited to a year.
Yeah, so do you, just make sure you understand the difference that's for events. This is for a license to operate a business.
To sell stuff, too.
Certainly, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome, good luck. Next application, please.
Joel and Jennifer Whitman, 6 Pearl Bush Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance under section 150 dash, I'm sorry, 250 it's supposed to be, dash 14.3 of the code to allow pool equipment with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F13 of the code at 6 Pearl Bush Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Joel and Jennifer Whitman and is owned R-1-20. SBL number 124.02-1-45. Application number 21Z-0017.
All right, well, Matt will be leading you through this application. But prior to his starting that, let me remind members of the public, if they have comments, they can call 3408771 or submit them electronically at penfield.org. In fact, we already do have somebody in the queue. And we'll get to that in due course. May we have your name, your names for the record, please, before Matt starts?
Yes, Joel Whitman, 6 Pearl Bush Drive.
Jennifer Whitman.
Good evening, Whitmans.
Evening.
You have a, you had a very thorough application and you did a good job of addressing the, the concerns and the public comments. I, I just want to clarify and go over a couple of things. First, you submitted a picture or a couple of pictures of what looks like might be a pool filter. Is that the actual filter in the, in the location that it would be? Is that the actual filter?
The actual pictures are the pump itself.
Yeah.
As well as the heater unit. The filter itself, we did not include that. It is a little larger than the heater unit. However, the filter itself does not generate any kind of noise. It would be more of a visual aspect. The picture that you see to the right showing the bush between the two units, that would be where the filter would go in the alternate location. And the same would be for, in the proposed location, there would be a filter that would be there.
And I, the, the picture on the right would be how it would look if there was no variance. And the picture on the left is how it'd look if there is a variance, correct?
That's correct, it's approximately two and a half feet difference.
And, and I know that you recognize that it is observable from your neighbor's driveway. And you proposed that you would take steps and measures to cover it up and to hide it. Is that still accurate?
Yes, very accurate.
What would you do?
It's visible from the driveway in either location.
Yes, yes. And, and what would you do if the variance was granted? What would you do to cover it up and hide it?
So the issue would be, we would use screening as well as vegetation to conceal that location from view from their yard. We did explain that to the people who had a concern, our neighbors. And we had spoken with them prior to their concern and indicated that that's what we were planning on doing.
And would you be okay with any, if this was granted, that it would, a condition of that permission would be that you have to cover it up and, and hide it in some way?
Oh, that's fine, yes.
And, and there was also a, a question or an issue with sound. And I think you addressed it with showing that the sound, and if you move it back three feet, it would be the same sound that, as it would be three feet towards the line, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and I'm presuming that if it's, you know, making a really loud sound and clearly in need of some sort of mechanical fixing, that you would not let it keep running so as to disturb and annoy the neighbors, that you'd actually get it fixed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're just talking about some sort of ambient sound that would exist in a normal pool filter, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the pool itself is going to, I guess for a lack of a better word, be on the other side of the house, correct? If you're looking at. And, and you want to locate, locate it where it is because that's where the utilities are to hook it up?
Correct, the furnace heater area is in line with the gas line as well as the electric in that location.
And would it be a greater expense to, to put it in another area of the yard or the house?
Yes, it would, it would be an expense to us as well as when we move it out further in the yard, it becomes visible to approximately seven houses in the neighborhood as opposed to where we are proposing that it would go now.
And there's an air conditioner and an egress window that are already within that 10-foot setback, correct?
That's correct.
And would this pool equipment, would it stick out further into the setback, the side setback than the air conditioner already is?
No, I believe that it would run in line with that, parallel to the house. It's, the unit is proposed to be sitting on a two-foot by six-foot section of concrete slabs that go underneath the pool system.
And the, the pool itself is setback more than 10 feet, correct? That doesn't encroach into any setbacks, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
I, I know we have somebody on, on the line, Dana, I don't know if you want to, if we bring him in now?
Sure, I, I would just like to ask one question. What, what type of buffering would you propose to put around it? Vegetation?
Are you talking about the, the pump unit or the entire system?
Well, what are you, what are you talking about? Are you talking about buffering the entire system?
Well, what we would like to do is we would like to obscure the view from the roadway as well as the, our neighbor's driveway by vegetation and screening. And then there are also acoustic buffers for the pump unit itself. are also acoustic buffers for the pump unit itself that we are looking into, to help mitigate any noise that may proceed.
That's actually what I was going to ask you about, because I was talking with somebody about this. Pretty smart person said that you can buy attractive, almost like sections of vinyl fence. I don't want to say that that's what they are, but it could be that that person was referencing the same sort of thing. So visual buffering with vegetation is great. I think that's a great idea. But if there's something more substantial, perhaps, more solid, whatever word you want to use to help drive the noise in a different way, I'd ask and recommend that you take a look into that, too.
Yes, we actually have done that already. So we're looking at either an acoustic box, which covers the pump unit, and then there's like full enclosures that also would take care of that issue.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? All right, so then-
Did you want, Dana, did you want that to be a condition, or did you just asking them to-
Well, are you willing to do what you just described? If we were to make that a condition of approval, would that be acceptable to you? You would go ahead and do that? The acoustic box?
That's fine.
Okay, great. Good clarification there, Matt. All right, so let's go to our caller. It is your neighbor, Mr. Ramhotwar of Ten Pearl Bush Drive.
Yeah, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Ramhotwar, and I am the next door neighbor to Whitman at Ten Pearl Bush Drive. So thank you very much for letting me express my concern and in front of the committee. I have also given a written statement with the pictures and submitted, and in fact, also spoke to actually Jennifer and Joel. Actually, my main concern is the noise that proposed water farm placement will increase. At present, in the summer, we keep our windows closed. We like to keep it open because that air conditioning unit and other units are directly facing to our bedroom window and closed proximity to my study room. So therefore, I'm really concerned, actually, my family. I'm really concerned that the increase, you know, these units, whatever units Joel wants to put in, there are three additional units he's going to put. Or if there are like four or five units you can say on the side of the house, almost very close to about six feet away from the boundary. And especially somewhere, we like to keep the windows open, but I think I'm really concerned that we may not be able to keep it open. So this will impact, actually, the noise will impact my well-being and my family's well-being. I know Joel wants to put some, like say, what you call the aboritus, you know, just to, not to see the units, but I think that's not going to help the sound. All the units can be seen from my driveway, by the way. And then all the units will be facing to my window, and that's the main concern, by the way. So I hope you can consider that, and thank you for letting me express my concern.
Well, you're quite welcome, and I hope that you heard tonight that the applicant said that they're going to take additional steps regarding the sound by purchasing this new sound technology, acoustic box or whatever it's called. So that would be in addition to the potential vegetation as well. And then the reality is, if this isn't granted, they're going to put it up anyway, and it's going to be three feet away or a few feet away, and frankly, probably not going to have any sound difference. So honestly, from where I'm sitting, you're better off having us grant this and having them put those bufferings up than not granting it. They put it up and they don't have to do the buffering, so.
So actually, so it looks like you are approving conditionally, such as-
If this gets, if it gets approved tonight, it's going to be with the conditions of the appropriate visual and acoustic buffering, yes?
Okay, I think that will be fine, because if Joel is ready to put the buffering and additional sound protection, that will be fine. Certainly, it is in front of window, but like you cannot do anything because he has that pool right to put it there. But I think the sound was the main reason that was my concern, okay?
Great. Again, thanks for calling, and thanks for your submissions. Like I said at the beginning, this is how things are supposed to work, so we appreciate it. I don't see any other phone calls, nor do I see any electronic submissions, so let's proceed.
All right, starting with seeker, I make a motion that this is a type-two action, requiring no further review.
I'll second that. So on seeker, Matt made the motion, type-two. I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And on the merits?
On the merits, I'm going to move to approve the variance with the condition that the applicant install, you know, a box or fencing or something for acoustics-
Acoustic, yeah.
And also vegetation and screens for visual, to make it more visually appealing. It's a somewhat minimal variance, especially when you consider the, that the air conditioning is already within the setback and doesn't require a variance. It's, the, any effect they'll have on the neighborhood will be minimized by putting, by these conditions. I think it's self-created, but it makes sense that they want it where the utilities are and cut down the expense and not in the middle of the yard so that even more neighbors may be affected by it. So with those conditions, I would move to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, great. So we have a motion to approve with those conditions, and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, good luck, folks, and thank you for the thorough application and the willingness to be flexible with your neighbor. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yep, have a good night.
Night.
Next application, please.
Frederick J. Odenbach, Shadow Lake Properties LLC, 1850 Five Mile Line Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request a special permit under section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a larger freestanding sign than permitted under section 250-10.12-B1 of the code with less setback than permitted under section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1850 Five Mile Line Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Shadow Lake Properties LLC and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 124.01-2-45.11. This is application number 21Z-0018.
All right, thanks. And before we start with the application, I'll just remind folks, if they have comments, please call 340-8771, or through the website electronically, penfield.org. Mike's going to lead you through this application, but if we could have you give us your name and address for the record before Mike starts, please.
Hi, my name is Fritz Odenbach. I'm owner of Shadow Lake. I live at 60 Riverside Drive, Rochester.
Good evening, Mr. Odenbach.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So this is an application, in my understanding, to replace the existing sign at Shadow Lake Golf and Restaurant?
Yes, correct, yep.
That this board in '79 approved a much smaller sign at the location where the current sign is. I'm not sure, according to those minutes, it was a 10-foot variance from a 20-foot setback. So that was a 10-foot variance. And then at some point, that was for a much smaller fence. The fence was replaced by the existing fence in the same location. That fence was much larger, 20, about 20 square feet, which is what's allowed. And now you're going to replace that. My understanding is it's not going to be any closer to the road than the current sign is. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
The current sign is a little bit taller and not as wide. I think you have a picture of the new sign we're putting in?
Yes, yeah, I think it-
It's a little lower and a little more contemporary. It's replacing on the same exact spot, a little more contemporary and replacing the dated sign. It's been, it's over 20 years old.
Do you know how far that sign is from the right-of-way?
I can't tell you that exactly. No, I don't know that.
Andy, do you know, I mean, we, you said it was 22 feet approximately from the road.
Yeah, that, based on my estimates, that would equate to approximately 10 feet, a 10-foot setback from the property line.
Okay, so we're going to use that figure if we, to grant that. Okay. Can you tell me what the colors are of the sign? There's a nice rendering of it, and there was some indication in the corner that it was some type of charcoal and blue?
Yeah, well, let me start with, we had the fire at Shadow Lake a couple of years ago, so we renovated the whole inside and outside of the building. And these are the colors. The colors that I'm looking at right now are not quite it. Where the Shadow Lake Golf and Restaurant is like a light gray, what we technically call a morning fog gray. And around it were the 1850. You ready for this one?
Yeah.
The sea serpent blue, which is like a slate blue.
Wow.
I like that fancy name.
Yeah.
And then, and then the base, which is an aluminum base, is going to be like some type of bronze or peppercorn, they call it. So it kind of matches the colors we have, the color scheme we have in the restaurant.
Okay.
The exterior of the restaurant is a slate blue.
All right. It was, is this sign going to be illuminated at all?
Yes. It's illuminated from the inside, so all what's white on the sign, the Shadow Lake Golf and Restaurant, not the 1850, but there'll be a light inside that'll shine through on both sides, no matter which direction you're coming from.
Okay. And can you-
It's a little lower. It's not as high as the other one. It's quite a bit lower, but a little wider.
Right. And I guess that width is going towards the property, not away from it, right? Since you were saying the front is, you're going to be the same.
Yeah, it's going to be basically on the same location, but we have the ability to, if we get within the setback, I mean, too close, then we can move it back on the golf course, another foot or two, or whatever it takes. So I haven't laid it right out specifically, and apologize for that.
All right. Can you address why you can't put it, you know, 20 feet in from the right-of-way rather than 10?
Well, because nobody would see it driving by.
Yeah.
There's double road pine trees there.
Right.
That would be a little defeat to purpose. We're just trying to basically make it look nicer and upgrade it. And our current sign is, if you, next time you go by there, take a look at it, it's pretty well falling apart, between woodpeckers, between foundations sinking. It's, and it's just dated. So that was the only reason.
All right. And my understanding is the total, the way we measure the sign, it's going to be a little over 30 square feet? That's what you're proposing?
Yes, the sign part, yes.
Which is approximately 10.67 feet beyond what's allowed under the code?
I'm-
Yeah, we wouldn't know that.
Sorry, I'm not sure of that number, but yes, I believe you.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Anything else?
It's actually, if you don't mind me saying, it's actually the square footage of it right now, the way it is, is about the same size as the current sign. It's just a different shape, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody that's phoned in or submitted comments via the website. I will tell you that last Friday, I was driving and I saw the sign, and I turned in, and I played 18 holes, and it probably would have been better if I hadn't seen the sign. Although I finished with two, I finished with two pars.
Wow.
And of course, by the way, it was in great shape. It really, it was in great shape.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, good for you.
We're very lucky to have a good spring. It kind of counters all the coronavirus business, so.
Yeah, I'll bet.
A lot of people are golfing though. That's great.
And I will tell you, I also, you guys are doing pretty good with a local flavor website or something. I don't know. It's a really good deal there, so keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So let's move ahead with the seeker.
Okay, I'm going to move that this is an unlisted action under seeker and issue a negative declaration.
Second by Marie on seeker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
As far as the motion itself, I'm going to move to grant both variances. As Mr. Odenbach said, that sign needs to be where it is or no further from the road because of the double trees on each side of the roadway, actually, coming from both directions. So it's in a good position where the existing sign's in a good position. This one would be the same. As far as the size of the sign, it's, you know, considerable variance, but actually, you know, the way we measure things is we're taking into account everything surrounding it as one. But if you look at the actual light gray portion of that sign, it's a little over 15 square feet, which is, you know, under the 20 square foot that's allowed. So visually, it almost looks to me smaller than the existing sign. Plus, the sign will be, is obviously more appealing. It's, as you said, more contemporary and modern. The height's lower by almost two feet than the old one, and for those reasons, I move to grant this.
Okay.
I'll second.
A second from Matt, a motion to approve with a second from Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
You, too.
Next application, please.
Salvatore Fantuso, Fantuso Family Brands Incorporated, 1661 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.6-C1C of the code to allow an acupuncture office and apartment at 1651 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Fantuso Family Brands Incorporated and is zoned limited business, SBL number 093.19-1-22. This is application number 21Z-0019.
All right. And before we begin here, I just remind folks, if they have any comments on this application, they can call 340-8771, or submit the comments via the town website at penfield.org. If you gentlemen can just introduce yourself and give us your address for the record, and then I'll lead you through this very clear and frankly, very simple application. But go ahead and give us your names.
Hi, my name is Salvatore Fantuso. I'm the president of Fantuso Family Brands, and we purchased the property at 1651 Empire Boulevard in January, and my son had leased it since February 2020, a month before COVID hit.
All right.
I'm Greg McMahon from McMahon Luru Engineers.
Okay. Looks like a new pair of glasses, Sam.
Same ones, same old ones.
Oh, yeah, okay. So my understanding is, as you just said, you recently acquired the property, the company did. The intent is to use it for an apartment and then also an acupuncture office, and that, those are the same uses that were in place there prior to your purchase of it. Is that, is that true?
Yes, sir.
All right. So are you going to change anything in terms of the parking lot or the structure at all? I didn't see any indication that you were going to change anything.
Not, not right away, sir.
Okay. And how about your hours of operation? What would you, for the acupuncture? Where are you going to propose those?
It's my son's acupuncture office. It's my appointment only, and it's usually, he's done every day by five, and he takes some clients on Saturday mornings.
Okay. And I'm not aware of any complaints that we had from anybody about that use at that property. I think it was appropriate and it will be appropriate, so I don't have any further questions. Anybody on the board have any more questions?
No.
Anything else to offer briefly, applicants? No?
No.
All right. Well, very good. Then we will proceed. I'll start with the environmental seeker. I'll make a motion to declare this type-two action under seeker.
I'll second.
All right. I've made the motion. Andres is second, and all those in favor on seeker?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And as far as the application, I'll make a motion to approve. It is very simple. The use before is the same as the proposed use. It's a great location for that, and I don't see any problems. We've, we'll grant the condition upon the hours as stated by the applicant. Plenty of parking spaces, so there's really no issue here at all. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye now. Bye-bye now. Number nine.
Brian Udovitch, 1677 Salt Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger storage building than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 1677 Salt Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Brian and Danielle Udovitch and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 110.04-1-33. This is application number 21Z-0020.
Thank you, and actually, before we start with this one, I should note that on that last application, we had no callers and we had no public comments electronically, so I apologize for kind of moving through that one extra quick. In any event, before we start this, I would also like to remind folks they can call 340-8771 with comments, or submit them electronically at penfield.org. Let's see, Matt's going to walk you through this, but may we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, it's Brian Udovitch, 1677 Salt Road.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Udovitch, how are you?
Good, good, thanks.
So you want to put up a 20-foot-tall building accessory structure for storage of property, and you're looking for it to be 464 square feet greater than the code allows, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And what is the material that is going to be on the outside of this structure? Is it going to?
Yeah, the exterior would be, it's steel, it's painted steel.
And is it painted red, or is it painted something color similar to your house?
We haven't settled on a color, but I'm thinking like a dark brown or dark tan. I really want it to kind of blend in with the surrounding. The house is white, I don't really want to match it to the house.
Okay.
It would stand out too much, but.
So it's going to be complimentary to the house, though?
Yeah, or at least the surroundings being.
So it's not going to be lime green or, or a neon yellow or something like that?
No, I really want it to blend in, I don't want it to be an eyesore for anybody.
Okay, and, and there's, it's going to be, you're not looking for a setback variance, right? It's going to, it's going to meet all the setback requirements?
Correct.
And there's other barns or buildings in the area that are the same or even
Yeah.
bigger size, about two doors down from you, there's a 1,200-square-foot barn, and then around the corner going one way, there's about a 2,400 square foot, and going around the corner going the other way, there's about 1,400 square foot?
Yeah.
So it's going to, it's not going to be outside the scope of other buildings within the area?
Correct.
And you have a shed on the property already?
I do.
And do you have any issue with the condition, if we were to grant this variance, the condition being that you remove that shed?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and there's going to be no power or anything to the, to the building?
There's no plans for power at this point, it'd be kind of expensive to do that, this is just cold storage.
So there's going to be no lights on the building, or?
No lights.
You're not going to have barn parties or anything like that in there?
No.
What are you going to be storing in there?
We have a fifth-wheel travel trailer and a truck that we tow it with, that I'd like to keep indoors and try to keep nice.
And you have no other place to store those?
Not indoors, no.
Good. And we got neighbor approval from a Ms. Gran, Tina Gran. She says that you're a very, a very good neighbor, and she's in favor of us approving this variance.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else you want to say?
No, just, I'm willing to do anything to get it approved. I don't, I don't, I've talked to the other neighbor also, he verbally said it was okay. Thank you for my other neighbors for actually writing some, but no, I really don't have anything to add.
I have no further questions.
Okay, as of right now, I don't see any comments electronically or on the phone, but are there any other board questions? All right, well then let's.
I think the one thing to know is that this is well vegetated as well, in terms of, you know, obscurity.
Okay. Well, let's proceed then.
For seeker, I make an application or move that this is a type 2 action.
I'll second that. So we have a seeker motion to declare type 2, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
I would move to approve this application, conditioned on the other accessory building or being removed from the property. It is, it's in line with other buildings in the area, very close to his house, the closest one being two doors down. He's looking, he's not looking to paint any obscure or ridiculous color, he's looking for it to be complimentary to the house, whether it's the same color or not, it's, he's looking for it to blend in. It is a vegetative area, there's going to be really no impact to the environment, and it is self-created, but I'm not, I'm not putting too much weight on that self-creation, so I would move to approve. I'll second.
All right, motion to approve as described with a second by Andres, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, before we go to the next one, I'll just note that in refreshing the screen here on the online comments, we did get a comment that I didn't see before, I don't know if it was delayed, but from Michael Zarzicki of 8 Splendorwood Drive on application number six, the pool equipment, and it's really a question, the question says, wouldn't the AC unit be louder than the pool filter anyway? I take that as a position in favor of the application, but.
I would take it that way, too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why it didn't come through before, but it didn't, but I don't think anyone would object to us putting that in the record at this point. All right, so next application, please, Andy.
I think we probably should also note that it wouldn't have changed our outcome.
Very good thing to note in the record, absolutely.
John L. DiMarco, S. Square, 1056 Hillsboro Cove, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a freestanding sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 2526 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Browncroft Boulevard LLC and is owned business non-retail, SBL number 123.07-2-11, application number 21Z-0021.
Thank you, Andy, and again, before we start this, let's just remind the public that they can call 340-8771 with comments, or submit them via the website at penfield.org. And may we have you introduce yourselves and give us your address for the record, please? Whoever wants to go first.
Hi, sure, my name is Kyle Taylor, I'm one half of the DiMarco-Taylor Law Group. My address is 499 Jefferson Ave. I'm appearing tonight along with Mark DiFrancesco on behalf of John DiMarco. John sends his regrets, unfortunately, he is out of town at this time, so he's unable to attend, but we're happy to appear on his behalf.
Okay, and then Mark is our other potential speaker.
Yep, Mark DiFrancesco, 33, Christine Circle.
Okay, thank you both. So my understanding is you're proposing to replace a sign that currently exists, you're going to modernize a sign, we see the depictions up there. While the proposed sign is larger than the sign that's there now, it still is, from a size standpoint, fits within the code, and the issue is that its location is, I guess, closer to the right of way or the road than allowed, but it's the same location as the current sign, just going to be a little bit bigger because you guys have, fairly recently, I think there's been some additions to the building, and so the number of tenants is increasing dramatically, and you want to be able to allow the tenants to have identification on the sign. All that accurate?
That's correct, with the exception of one matter. The proposed sign will comply with the offset or setback from the front property line, which is currently 20 feet, and so we are proposing to replace the current sign with this new sign in the same location, so the variance is actually from the eastern property line, which is R120.
Okay, great, I appreciate that clarification. So let me just ask you then, what kind of property lies to the east? That's the, that's the church, right?
That's correct.
And then, just so we know, on the other side, the west is the credit union.
Correct.
So there aren't any residential homes anywhere near this, where this sign would be?
That's correct.
And we don't anticipate any, any site issues for people driving on Browncroft or coming in and out of your location, the church or the credit union?
We do not.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, well, then let's proceed, I don't see any comments via the phone or electronic. Let me just refresh that to make sure, maybe I didn't do that right last time, but in any event, I see no comments, so we'll proceed with the seeker, I'll make a motion to declare this an unlisted action, and also to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Give it to Mike.
Mike's second on the seeker motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then as far as the merits, I'd make a motion to approve, I think the written application and the comments tonight have laid out pretty well, we're going to have a nice-looking sign there, we're going to have more people conducting businesses at Penfield, so I think this is all a good thing, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who got the second?
Marie, definitely, definitely Marie.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Wow, moving, right along. Application 11, is that right?
Yep.
No, it's 11.
Kevin Farrell, Penfield Storage, 1677 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a larger freestanding sign than permitted under Section 250-10.12-B1 of the code, a second building sign whereas a maximum of one building sign is permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, and building signage with greater area than permitted under Section 250-10.13-B of the code at 1677 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Lynn Perry Properties LLC and is owned limited business and general business, SBL number 138.08-1-42.41. This is application number 21Z-0022.
All right, and before we get into the application, again, I'd like to remind the public they can call 340-8771 with comments, or submit them, penfield.org electronically. And I'd also like to note that, as you all know, I have to watch my blood sugar, and I have been wondering when I can safely eat this Tootsie Roll and avoid having to talk with my mouth full, because my mother might be watching, and if she were and I were talking with my mouth full, Andy, I'd be in big trouble.
We don't want that.
All right, sir, may we have your name and address for the record, and then Mike will lead you through this.
Yes, Kevin Farrell, 900 Taylor Rise, Victor 1456.
Unmute.
Oops, sorry. I'm not on mute.
There you go.
No.
No?
Spacebar.
Yep.
You got me now?
We do.
Okay, sorry about that, so this is Kevin Farrell, and I'm, my address is 900 Taylor Rise, and that's Victor for 14564.
Good evening, Mr. Farrell, how are you?
Hi.
Good. All right, so we're going to be talking about three signs tonight, my understanding. One freestanding sign and two building-mounted sign, all for your self-storage facility on Penfield Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you're proposing a freestanding sign of 28 square feet, double-sided, and two building-mounted signs, one on the entrance to the, to the main building on Penfield Road, and a second one that faces another access road on Circle Plaza, Plaza Circle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so we have a variance for two building-mounted signs when the code only allows one, so we're going to talk about that a little bit. And I think the bigger issue, at least in my mind, is the size of these signs. So why don't we start with the, with the freestanding sign? Could you tell us why you need a sign that's approximately 40% larger than code allows?
So the pole sign is about all I have that can be seen from down the road, looking east on Penfield Road, it's a pretty small pole sign, the, if I were compliant, yeah, there's a good shot of it. And backing up, the whole idea that I did move out here to Penfield Road was so that I would get more drive-by exposure, and I have the big Charlie Brown sign next to me, and it's pretty hard to see from, the sign that, right now, that we were looking at doing, is pretty tough to see from even 80, 90 yards down the road, and that was one of our big concerns, so we were just looking to get that slightly larger. It also decreases the cost because it's a standard life-stored sign versus getting a custom one, the four-by-seven is. So we're looking for about, that's about, about a foot longer and about eight inches higher than, than would be allowed by code.
Okay. I wanted to point out, there's, most of the freestanding signs on both sides of the street are considerably smaller than what you're proposing. They don't seem to have a problem, now, they don't all have a Charlie Brown sign in front of them, but it seems to me you can angle that freestanding sign on your place, or locate it, so that you aren't going to be that restricted by that sign. Have you thought about that?
Well, the, some of the signs are, and some of the, the Delta Sonic sign's much larger, the Penfield Fourhouse sign is a little, is the same size as the one we're looking at now. When you put those on a 20-foot pole sign, they look kind of silly, just because, because they're so small. But comparatively, just especially the viewing distance from the sign, I had my kids down there holding up the difference, and it really did make a little bit of a difference as far as what was, what was visible from there. And again, that's our only real, aside from the building-mounted signs, that's the only thing that we have there. And it just, it did make a little bit of a difference, again, we're talking eight inches high by a foot wider, but, and it's about $400 less for me in cost. I am running into, this is kind of a bad time, you probably know about building materials, and my cost overruns are significant, so that's another reason I'm trying to get to something that's more standard, and that was the size that, that they said is kind of the next one off, so we did cut it out and we compared the two, and it made a little bit of a difference, so that's why I was hoping we could get the variance for that.
So a little bit of a difference, okay.
Yeah.
What's the distance between the building-mounted sign and the freestanding sign, approximately?
It's about 30 feet, 20, I think it's about, let's see, Andy, you have the, that first one you showed there?
This one?
But it's roughly 30. We had to move it slightly, just to the right there. Yeah, perfect. So we did have to adjust this slightly, but it is setback compliant, we had to back it up a little bit, a little bit more off the road.
Okay.
And so there'd be, you know, there's the three parking spaces, the handicap ones a time and a half wide, plus the sidewalk, and then, and then the pole sign.
Okay. With regard to the two building-mounted signs, I, you know, it makes sense to me that you would want that, since you have two entrances, the roads are perpendicular, so that the building faces to the entrance. building faces to the entrances are on separate directions. Is there anything else, any other reason why you need two signs, building-mounted?
No, that's correct. I face two ways there. The signs are, they're about 300 feet apart, and they, you know, they're entirely different on either side. They are both under the allowed square footage based on, based on my frontage on those, about 10% under both the signs. In fact, the building-mounted sign facing Penfield Road is about 20% undersized, under allowable size. It's just that number. We initially did it, we were two parcels there, we had Plaza Circle, and then we had Penfield Road, but because I combined them, that's what required me to go for the, I became non-compliant at that point for two building-mounted signs.
Can we go back to the pole sign for a minute? Illumination of that, I assume that's going to be illuminated?
It is. It's a solid blue, the one thing, in the original rendering, that white, it's actually going to be a solid blue. That's the one thing that we did change, and he showed that before as well.
And that's illuminated?
As far as, yeah, that's it. So it's not a, it's not a super bright sign in that regard, but it does, just that extra, that extra foot and the little, that eight inches up, and that also accounts for the outside edges as well. It really does look, it looks sharp, but it isn't any, that kind of sticks out. I drove up to the one in Phillips Road in Webster, and they have that similar sign, the exact sign, actually, but it's mounted, it's more of a pedestal sign, and they look, they look really nice and nice, very tasteful.
Is that internally illuminated?
It is, yeah.
Okay. And will that be on all night?
Yeah, it goes on all night, and then the way, the way they have it set up is, it's low wattage, and they're, they, the same thing with the building-mounted signs. The yellow part on the, on the pole, on the building-mounted sign is slightly brighter, but there, again, there's no white, they don't illuminate a lot of, a lot of white at all, because it's just pure blue and yellow.
Okay. And do you have rendering of the design for the larger sign on Plaza Circle?
Yep. We do.
I don't recall seeing that, or at least on the, on the building? Do you have a picture of it, how it's going to appear on the building?
Yeah, there should be, let's see, the last, yep.
And that's approximately four feet, six inches high and 25 feet, two inches long?
Yeah, that's the one that faces the Home Depot there, I guess. Yep, it's about 113 square versus 125 allowable.
So I got to tell you, I have a problem with a 25-foot sign at that location, as well as 153 square feet of building-mounted sign when you're allowed 56 under the code. That's three times as much.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, that's my fault, I didn't explain that well. So the 56 is, the one that we just saw was the Home Depot-facing sign.
Right.
That wasn't the, the one that faces Penfield Road is only 80% of what's allowed there. That, they look, they look the same, so, yeah, sorry, Andy, the one that we showed was, that was the view looking west. So the last one, okay, this is it. And now the, yeah, okay. Now, that, we depicted this with a white around it, but none of that is there, that's just, it's just an internally-mounted individual channel letter sign. So it goes, I don't know if you've been by it at all, but that gray brick is up, and then it's just the, just the letters and the logo. So really, the actual square footage of the sign is probably half or less than what's allowed, but we did it as a square, just to count it for, to make it easy. But it's just channel letters. It's pretty small. We don't have a lot of room in the face of that, and so we just designed it to be just kind of small and tasteful there.
A four-and-a-half by 25-foot sign is small?
Well, then, again, we're talking about, we're talking about the one that's facing Home Depot is four and a half by 25.
Yeah.
That's 100 yards off my property line.
Well, regardless of how you got there, you're entitled to a certain amount of building-mounted sign based on linear frontage foot.
Right.
Okay? You don't have linear frontage on, you only have one front.
I have two, well, we have two. We have the Plaza Circle front, and we have Penfield Road.
Not under the code, you don't. You have one building front for the property.
Yeah, if I can interrupt you, Mike, I wanted to ask you, Andy, about that, because how we've arrived at the maximum of 56 square feet is using a formula, which is in the code, and that formula is based upon the linear foot measurement for the building. You have several buildings here, and so staff made a determination that the building to be used, which is a determinate, determination you've made in other similar cases before, I assume, but it's to use the building that houses the main office, primary entrance.
Yeah, this property's a little bit out of the ordinary, because it does have more than one building.
Yeah.
But under the code, like you said, we have to pick, select one building frontage for the purpose of calculating the allowable signage. So we picked the building that fronts on Penfield Road for that purpose.
Okay. And that just happens to be the same building that has the main office and the primary entrance?
Yes.
All right, so, but it sounds like the reason for your selection was more the fact that it fronts on Penfield Road, and you probably would have made that selection even if the main office was in another building?
Uh, maybe not.
Okay, well...
I mean, we look for the main, the primary use, I guess, or, you know, the main office, wherever that would be located.
And it used to be, it used to be in the back, and now we're moving it out to the front.
Yeah, well, and the reason I'm exploring this is because it's an issue. If another, and I'm not, obviously, I'm not pointing the finger at you, but if, if you can bring that last one up that had all the buildings in it, there's other larger buildings on the property that, can you put the cursor, the yellow cursor on the one that was used to arrive at the 56?
This is more accurate here.
Yeah.
So this building here.
Right.
The main office is up here.
Yeah.
So we use the frontage of this building, which is quite small, actually, in comparison to all the other buildings.
Yeah. Like, if you had used that same building but used the long side, you know, probably be way under what's, and again, I'm not, I just want to make sure everybody's clear is, you got a lot of square footage there in terms of buildings, but you've got a relatively small amount of allowable square footage signage.
Yes.
And it is unique and different, but, okay, Mike, I...
But I think, you know, you still have to look at, regardless of what the code allows, you got to look at the size of the structures, the face of what's going on.
Sure.
And make a determination as to what's reasonable. I mean, that's a location to get at the storage on the, on the Home Depot-facing side, but it's not really what people are going to see, and it's not the type of business where it's going to rely on impulse drive-by purchases. I mean, it's a storage facility.
Actually, 50% of our, 50% of our, of our business in storage industry is drive-by. That's the whole reason that I moved out to the front on Penfield Road, is because I had tons of people, I've been back here 20 years, saying, geez, we've been here our whole lives and never knew you were back here. So we have moved up there, but, but again, the viewing distance to that building, I'm already having people ask me, geez, we're, you know, we're in Wells Street or we're at the Penfield Poorhouse, and what is that? Because the building that we have now, it doesn't, it wouldn't have any identifiable markings on it at all, and the viewing distance to see the building is, and that's why we calculated the square footage out, out of the Plaza Circle, just to try to get a sense of, you know, what could be seen out there, just because it's not something that's up close to the road. And that's where we ended up with the, what was the, what was the frontage on Plaza Circle, again, Andy? Do we have?
I didn't actually really look at that. I concentrated on picking the frontage on Penfield Road and going with that one.
I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else have any?
Maybe, you know, more of a comment, just in terms of, you know, we're talking about traffic coming by, you know, with that being a one, no, I'll call it a one-way street, but in reality, you don't have through traffic going back up to 441, so a lot of it is, you know, one-way traffic coming through. Probably, you know, pretty much, I would think most of the traffic basically goes to, like, across the street, Delta Sonic, and then turns back around and goes back out the way they came, and, you know, very rarely comes up that side. I'm not opposed to the, you know, the freestanding sign or the building-mounted sign in the front, but, you know, like, the big sign facing the Home Depot is what caught my eye, going, wow, that seems really large.
Yeah.
On such a massive building, I guess, you know, in a sense, you see this big building that's up there, because that is the tallest one on site, with the largest sign there, I guess that was the one that was really kind of, I started questioning, does it need to be that large, or could it be more of a logo or channel letters, kind of like the front of the building?
Right. And that's really the, that's the entrance to the storage, or an entrance to the storage.
Right.
It's not really the, it's not the office.
Right. If you went there, you wouldn't be able to get to the front office.
Yeah. And I think one just...
Yeah, there's no, there's no access from, after we opened, there's no access in from that road on Plaza Circle. It's just too, that road gets destroyed by, right now, it's full of Home Depot spring stock, and it's a disaster, it has been. I've been cleaning up that field back there for decades now. We're going to shut that off completely and just put a fire, just put a gate in for the fire trucks, and that's it. So nobody will be entering that property from that, that way, unless it's an emergency.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? No? All right. Well, then, let's, I don't see any call-in comments nor any electronically submitted, so let's proceed with the seeker.
Okay, I'm going to move that this is an unlisted action again and issue a negative declaration.
All right. I will second that. We've got Mike's motion and my second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Merits?
Merits, I'm going to break this up into three. First of all, I want to move to allow two building-mounted signs where the code allows one. So that would be my motion to approve that.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion on the freestanding sign? Or, excuse me, the two building-mounted signs, right? No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay.
All right. With regard to the building-mounted, the freestanding sign, first of all, judging from a couple of criteria, the fact that the building itself, that particular building, is fairly close to the road, you have a building-mounted sign within 28 feet, I don't see the need for business identification purposes of having another, you know, eight feet, of square feet of signage there. As I said, if you look down the street, the Poorhouse sign doesn't look anywhere near that size. There's Bonsignori's, there's the, even the directory sign for the boardwalk is not that much smaller than this one. There's a heating and cooling place. So my motion would be not to allow that. So I move to disapprove the size of the pole sign.
Yeah. Any other comments on that, or a second?
I'll second it. I don't disagree with the, you know, the size aspect. I think, you know, when you compare it to the other signs on the street, I don't have a problem with actually having the building mount, or having the freestanding sign out there, but if I think it was a little more in scale with what the rest of them were, or down, you know, as you look down the street, I think that would make more sense.
But it seems like, if I may ask the applicant, it seems like, to a great extent, the size of that sign is driven by the cost. If I understood you correctly, if you, if you bought a sign or ordered a sign that was 26 square feet, you'd have to pay more than their standard, you know, four-by-seven or whatever it is.
Yeah, they have four signs, and that's, they have, they have like a two-by-two, and then it goes to that four-by-seven, and then bigger. So, yeah, it would have to be a custom order.
They go from four square feet to 28 square feet?
A two, I'm sorry, yeah, a, they have more of a rectangular one with a logo in front of it, which is two feet high and six feet, so it's like goes from 12 to 28, and then it goes up from there. So I'm kind of in that slot where I could go, I could go lower and get the standard, and it would be compliant, but the two-foot sign just looks silly on a pole on a 20-foot pole.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I understand that. Any other comments on this one? No? All right. So we have a motion to deny and a second. All those in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So then, I'll make a motion to approve this. I totally understand Mike's position. I don't think the size of the sign, given all the commercial properties down there, is, in this instance, unreasonable. I also understand his desire to try to keep costs down. He's put a lot of money into this property, it looks good, I think it's going to be a good use. So in this particular instance, I would be okay with the large request, and it is large that's being made.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm assuming a one opposed?
Yes.
I think I also want to point out the fact that, you know, this property is over three acres in size, in terms of, you know, the footprint of what we're covering for the land for, you know, it's not like a plaza where you have lots of businesses that would be taking up a lot of signs.
Yeah.
As well, so there's a little bit of a comparison there.
Okay. So the third aspect, Mike?
The total size, total square footage of the two signs, I don't have a problem with the building-mounted sign we're looking at here. But I just think that the other sign is much too large for the purpose that it's needed. So I don't know if I can...
Well, let's do a little bit math here. Given that we've approved the freestanding, and we've approved two building-mounted signs, where are we with square footage right now? We haven't determined the size of the building-mounted signs? Is that where we are?
Well, staff did determine them.
Yeah.
That's why it's here.
We box them off, I assume, when we do.
Yeah. Yeah, we just...
I guess maybe I should, what I should have said is, given the fact that we've approved the freestanding sign, and...
And we've approved two building signs.
And we've approved two, yes, and we've approved two building signs, how much do we have to work with on those two building signs? I, and I'm looking at you only because you happen to be sitting in that chair. What is it, 56 square feet minus, well, 28 square feet per face? So how much left is there for the sign, the two signs on the building?
If you go by the face of the five buildings in the back and the property that faced Plaza Circle, there's four 60-foot buildings, I'm sorry, there's four 40-foot buildings, and then the new 60-foot building that's there now.
Yeah.
And so that's where we arrived at the 125.
Well, I get it. We definitely have a staff decision that you're, you're entitled to a maximum of 56 square feet, so...
Okay, so that's, we're talking about the Penfield Road frontage?
Correct.
No.
Well, no, that's what staff used as the determination.
That was what was used to get to the 56 square feet, yes, using the formula in the code.
Okay. And then, was there a separate determination for the frontage on the, on the west facing, on the west side of the property that pops up to the Home Depot?
No. It was, because it's considered one property, so there's one calculation done. Staff chose that particular building because it fronts Penfield Road, but more so, apparently, because it contains the main office and the public entrance.
So there can't be two, okay.
There can't be two frontages for purposes of calculating how much signage that you're entitled to.
I mean, he's left for 16 square feet, I think is what he has right now. I mean, he's left for 16 square feet, I think is what he has right now. If I look at it right, because the building in front is basically 40, the sign on the front of the entranceway for the office, I think that was 40 square feet. Or do we, right, because that's how we would look at that, and we wouldn't include the freestanding as building mounted.
But it's not, but it's not in either our decision, or shouldn't be.
Well, now we're, we're basically up to the point of square footage. I think that's what this last...
Total square footage, absolutely. For building mounted signage.
Mm-hmm. Now, if you took that building, that second building that faces Plaza Circle separately, that's a 60-foot, that is 60 feet of frontage. So if you're just considering that building by itself, the sign that he's proposing would be under what is allowed by code.
And what's the size of that? That, that's the four by 25?
Yeah, because you would be allowed for the 60-foot frontage there, you'd be allowed 120 square feet of signage, and that sign is 113.
But I'll tell you, having asked you the question, you've given the answer, that, don't take my question as asking you to revisit the decision. I, I'm not, I just wanted to make sure I understand the reasoning behind it, and you've given that. I don't, but I think what we're struggling now is a very practical question of, we're okay with two signs, and we're probably okay with two signs having a total square footage greater than 56 feet. So really, the question is, how, how much more are we okay with? And we have one sign that is, per your application, let's just say 40 square feet, it's 39.75, but 40, leaving you, I think what Andres may have already said, 16 square feet for your other building mounted sign. And if you put it where you want to put it, you know, that's, that's two by eight. I have no idea whether, and, you know, and that would, that would keep you in compliance. So let me ask you this, sir, if you keep the four, uh, four and a half rounded by eight, almost nine feet, the 39.75 square foot, if you kept that sign, how much could you, could you shrink the four and a half by 25 sign and live with it, knowing that you only got, by code, 16 square? And if you want to think about this, you can come back next month. If you want to talk with a professional sign, I, you know...
I do know, I do know the numbers, I see where you're coming from. The next, again, I'm going to get back to the standard sizes because they, they do kick them out in standards. The next size down was about three and a quarter, I remember it was three and a quarter by 18, something like that. Anything less than that wouldn't even be worth doing, just because, again, the viewing distance is 100 yards, you can't really get close to this building, it's not even an entrance. So in that regard, I mean, people, I'm hoping that if you're sitting in the Walgreens drive-thru staring straight ahead, you'll be able to read the sign. You know, there's quite a few people that sit there in driving into the access road by, between the Good Year and the Home Depot. So it's, it's not a close-up sign, and these aren't cheap either, so, I mean, I, I, the other one was, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was, it was, it was about 90, 90 to 100 square feet.
Square feet. So if you were to combine that with the 40, you know, you're talking about 130 or 140 square feet. So somewhat less than 153, but not a hell of a lot less.
Yeah, it was about, the next size down was, was about three quarters of what's there. They have, they have quite a few options, and they go up to giant, giant ones. We just did one in Victor that's the same size, the three and a half, three and a half feet by 18. It looks pretty good, and you could see it from a fair distance away.
Okay. So is, is it fair to say then that you'd, you'd be willing to modify your application to use that three by 18, whatever it is approximate?
Yeah, we could, yep.
So that brings it down somewhat. I don't know.
It's, I can tell you this, I mean, I know you're just taking my word for it without seeing a rendering, but that's a big building, and that, that three and a half foot by 18 sign from 100 yards is not big. It, it really isn't, it sounds like it, but it's not one that goes on the wall, on a big wall like that.
No, I don't think anyone's taken issue with that. The issue that we have is that being allowed 56 square feet and asking for almost triple that. So we're talking with you, and you're being flexible with us, and I guess I'd add, we did approve two building mounted signs. So we, and we did that knowing that the code says 56 square feet, so to a certain extent...
And one sign.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, so I guess I, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application on this one as modified, the second building mounted sign being the three and a half by 18 or whatever, whatever it is. And then, man, the math, so 40 square feet plus whatever the second one was.
Yeah, so we're going from about four by 25 to three, it was three and a quarter feet by 18. So I would say roughly 70, it's about three quarters of that square footage. So, you know, 78.
It's about 60 square feet for that sign.
Fifty and a half.
So 60 plus 40.
Well, we had 113 proposed.
Yeah, but I'm talking the total now. The total seems, seems to have dropped from 153 to 100. Is that right, everyone agreeing with that?
Yes.
You agreeing with that, sir? Ballpark figure?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's good work, I think. So, yeah, I'm going to make a motion to, to approve the variance for total square footage in that amount. Any further discussion?
I think the big thing at point is that this is a unique situation where we have so many buildings that face in different directions, where this doesn't come up very often, or would come up very often ever again unless it was in our storage, you know, facility that had multiple buildings.
Nor does the, the frontage calculation come up, come up very often.
Where the property's so big and the frontage is so tiny on the Penfield Road.
The other problem is the code's really dealing with business identification for signs.
Yeah.
This is more of an advertisement thing. It's almost like similar to a billboard. That's part of the problem, which the code doesn't really get into, so...
And, and we encounter that nearly every sign application we have.
Right.
Okay, well, believe it or not, I don't see any comments from the public on this, either through the telephone or through the website. So again, I'll make that motion, and did we get a second?
Yes.
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, well, good work, applicant, staff, and board, and good luck to you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, have a good night. I think, was that the last one?
Last one.
All right, well, that being the last application, we will stand adjourned until next month. Thank everybody for their hard work, patience, well done. Have a good night.
Night.